Have you been exercising or involving careful judgment? Or judicious evaluation? Or are you one of those people who pass severe and unfavorable judgment? Is it okay to be a critic? Well, maybe we can answer those questions with some other questions. Do you always have a strong desire to be in charge? In most situations, do you know how to handle things better than most people? When you think someone's not doing their best, do you speak out what's on your mind? Being a critic is best left to those who really do know more than the person being judged. In the words of Jesus found in Matthew 7, verse 1 and 2, we find this, this godly advice. "Do not judge, so that you will not be judged; for with what judgment you judge, you will be judged; and with what measure you measure, it will be measured to you." That's pretty sage advice, don't you think? If it's okay, let me give you the translation from the Common Language of Ben. "Mind your own business, and others won't try to mind it for you." I'm Ben Perry. Let's look today at what happened to some folk from days long ago when they became critical of Moses. Let me make a suggestion to you. Guard your heart against criticizing others. We all have opinions and personal preferences. This can become a problem when we use our opinions and our own personal preferences as a basis to criticize others. As a Bible teacher, I spend a lot of time preparing this weekly study. I think I do a pretty good job, and I think I deliver it well before others. So sometimes, I make that mistake of criticizing other Bible teachers. Now, if I keep my opinions to myself as I observe the method of others, I demonstrate But sometimes, I let that criticism show. And when it does, it becomes even more destructive when it's aimed at those whose approach to ministry is a little bit different than mine. When individuals are ministering in ways that are biblical, yet perhaps different from my own ministry, instead of being unfairly judgmental, I should thank God for how He's at work. The passage we're going to be studying today is Numbers 12, 1 through 15. At the time of this particular account in Scripture, the children of Israel had left Kilbrot Hatava, the place where some Israelites died because they gave in to their desires to have meat instead of manna. Heading toward the land of promise, they stepped away from trusting God. Then they camped at another site called Hezera, which means settlement. There's no consensus, though there's no consensus, this encampment is generally considered to be modern Ain Khadra, about 30 miles from Jabel Musa, often identified as Mount Sinai. In Old Testament times, this area was part of Egypt. Today, it's in Algeria. Now, it didn't move, but the national lines did. Spiritual maturity means learning to guard our hearts from an unhelpful, critical spirit. So we should guard our heart against criticizing others. Heavenly Father, we ask you to give us wisdom and discernment when dealing with a critical spirit, whether it's our critical spirit or someone else's. Show us, Lord, how not to be judgmental, but instead to stand alongside others in support of their life journey in their deeds for you. I believe this is the will of Christ, our Savior, and I make this our prayer in His name. Let's take a moment to set some background and a little about Miriam, the sister of Moses, who is central to our study. There's many different translations of her name. Some are like, it may mean bitter. Others, God's gift, or beloved. And then still, one that says that her name means defiant. These various descriptions of Miriam are prevalent in our study. She is the sister of Moses and Aaron, and she is the daughter of Jacob and Amran, as she played a key role in the rescue of Moses when he was a baby. You can read about that in Exodus, Chapter 2, verses 4 through 8. And then she played a big role in the subsequent experience that the Israelites went through in the Exodus and while they traveled through the wilderness. After crossing the Red Sea, Miriam assumed the role of prophetess and led the women in the song of victory, steeped in faith and gratitude. There you can read in Exodus 15, 22, 21 about that occurrence. And at Hezroth, she took sides with Aaron in an act of rebellion against Moses when he married an Ethiopian, or as the Bible says, a Kushite woman, according to Numbers 12, 1 through 15. Beneath Miriam's disapproval of Moses' choice of a wife, lay a deeper problem of ambition and insubordination. The ethnic issue was a smokescreen for the real challenge, which was Moses' divinely appointed position of leadership. God chastened Miriam with a skin disease, which many scholars have concluded to be leprosy. She was healed following Moses' unnecessary prayer and a seven-day quarantine, Numbers 12, 15. She died and was buried at Kadesh, Numbers 20, and verse 1. And then later biblical references remembered her as an example to Israel in cases of leprosy, Deuteronomy 24, 9, and as a leader sent by God, Micah 6, 4. In our Scripture today, found in Numbers 12, in the first three verses, we read these words. "And Miriam and Aaron spoke against Moses, because of the Ethiopian woman he had married; for he had married an Ethiopian woman. And they said, 'Hath the Lord indeed spoken only by Moses? Has he not also spoken by us?' And the Lord heard it. Now the man Moses was very meek above all the men which were upon the face of the earth.'" People of the nation of Israel had a propensity to complain, and Miriam and Aaron were no different. A grumbling and critical spirit was an all-too-familiar mark of the Israelites throughout their journey in the desert. These people had an uncanny ability to find something to complain about, and their griping was often aimed at their leader, Moses. In Numbers 12, we discover that this attitude toward Moses was also shared by two of their leaders. In fact, there were Moses' family members, Miriam and Aaron. Now, Miriam is listed first, indicating she was likely the one leading out in this criticism. I can almost hear it right now. "Aaron, did you see who he married? What is he thinking? I know he's a leader in Israel, but we could do such a better job." You can hear it too, can't you? In this passage of Scripture, we get a glimpse of ethnic discrimination. Let's talk about that for just a moment. Kushites were people of a dark skin. They were children of Kush, who was the firstborn of Ham. It's evident there was a family squabble, and Miriam considered herself the arbitrator of her family's life. But remember, I told you, the criticism of Moses' marriage was just a smokescreen. There was a deeper motivation for criticizing him. And we find it in two questions that Miriam asks. Number one, does the Lord speak only through Moses? And number two, does He not also speak through us? Whatever you do, when you read that, don't miss the end of verse 2, where it says, "And the Lord heard it." The Lord always hears and always knows the motive behind our complaints. Verse 3 testifies to the character of Moses. He's described as a very humble man, which suggests, "He was not prideful or arrogant, but a man marked by a gentle and modest spirit." The Bible describes Moses' humility as greater than the humility of all the men on the earth. What a gentle soul he must have been, and yet there were times when he could display his righteous indignation. Remember the time when he came down from the mountain with the tablets of stone, and Aaron had built a golden calf, and the people were worshiping it. And in anger, he threw down the recording of the laws of God and broke them in front of the people. There was another time when he took umbrage with what God had said about how to get water by touching the rock. And he struck that rock. A great foreshadowing of how we, in our sin, struck Christ hanging on the cross. But those incidents, those things that he did, all they do is show that no matter who we are, no matter how humble we may be, no matter how gentle in spirit we may be, all of us have sinned and come short of the glory of God. All of us needed a Savior, and we still all sometimes fall back to those old ways. Moses was no different. After all, he was still just a man. Moses' life demonstrates that those who humble themselves in the sight of the Lord will be elevated to a greater status by Him. Read about that in James 4:10 this afternoon. So what kind of situations can tempt us to criticize others? In the next verses, we'll see that criticism of others can be a form of questioning God's We come now to a section of Scripture that is, to me, one of the most outstanding displays of God's glory found in all of the Bible. As I read these verses, keep your mind on the fact that no human being can look on God and live. His very presence is a consuming fire. The Bible says in Numbers 12, verses 4 through 9, "The Lord spoke suddenly unto Moses, and unto Aaron, and unto Miriam. Come out, you three, unto the tabernacle of the congregation." And the three came out, and the Lord came down in the pillar of the cloud and stood in the door of the tabernacle, and called Aaron and Miriam, and they both came forth. And he said, "Hear my words. If there's a prophet among you, I, the Lord, will make myself known to him in a vision, and will speak unto him in a dream. My servant Moses is not so. He's faithful in all my house. With him I will speak mouth to mouth, even apparently, and not in dark speeches, and the similitude of the Lord shall he behold. Wherefore then were you not afraid to speak against my servant Moses? And the anger of the Lord was kindled against them, and he departed." Oh my, how shocking it must have been for Miriam and Aaron to realize that their attitude was causing them to stand against God. Their shock should cause us to evaluate our hearts when we come before the Lord. The Lord began by distinguishing Moses from all other prophets. He described the close nature of their relationship. Is it any wonder that even today, the Jews revere Moses as being one of the greatest people ever in the world? You see, Moses had been granted an experiential knowledge of God's presence uncommon to others. You know, we pray, and then we have to read His word, so we can hear what He says. That wasn't true with Moses. When Moses spoke to God, God was right there in His presence and spoke back, and He could hear him. And they could have a one-on-one conversation. The Lord would speak with Moses face to face, just as a man speaks with his friend, Exodus 30 through 11. Can you imagine being able to have a relationship with Almighty God that is akin to a friendship? Moses was a prophet, but he was more than just a prophet. That point was probably not lost on Miriam and Aaron. They had spoken also prophetically for the Lord, even as prophets. They didn't know God like Moses knew God. When Miriam and Aaron criticized Moses by attacking his credibility, they were questioning God Himself, and God's anger burned against Miriam and Aaron after voicing his displeasure with them. I can well imagine if it hadn't been for the fact that Moses stepped in, the hall-consuming fire of the presence of God would have completely destroyed Miriam and Aaron. Now, often we find ourselves in disagreement with another person. How we react demonstrates how we stand with the Lord. Let's consider for a moment a couple of questions. Why was I personally offended by that particular preacher's word? Do I not like that other preacher's behavior or choice because it goes against God's word or because it's not in line with my preferences and choices? Be careful how you measure someone else. How can criticism of God's leaders impact us in our church? It's a good question. Just watching in the lives of Miriam and Aaron, we can see how some of that can come about. So in the next verses, we'll see God's judgment on Miriam and how He restored her. We read in Numbers 12, 10 through 15, that "the clouds departed from off the tabernacle; and behold, Miriam became leprous, white as snow. And Aaron looked upon Miriam, and behold, she was leprous. And Aaron said unto Moses, 'Alas, my Lord, I beseech you. Lay not the sin upon us, wherein we have done foolishly, and wherein we have sinned. Let her not be as one dead of whom the flesh is half consumed, when he cometh out of his mother's womb.' And Moses cried unto the Lord, 'Say, heal her now, O God, I beseech you.' And the Lord said unto Moses, 'If her father had but spit in her face, should she not be ashamed seven days? Let her be shut out of the camp seven days, and after that, let her be received in again.' And Miriam was shut out from the camp seven days, and the people journeyed not till Miriam was brought in again." You know, I'm sitting here as I create this little short video, trying to explain this lesson, and I am just absolutely amazed at the instantaneous circumstances that were created because of Miriam and Aaron's sin. In the slightest, shortest moment of time, Miriam was struck with leprosy, and she became white as snow, almost as if she had been born with leprosy. And Aaron, you know, it was part of his job to determine if a person had leprosy or not. And all he had to do was look at her, and he knew that this woman, who had been healthy in a moment, was diseased with leprosy. Miriam was now unclean. She was unfit to be in the presence of the Lord. Aaron responded by pleading with Moses and asking Moses to not hold against them their sin or transgression. They had falsely accused Moses of acting superior to them, yet they were the ones guilty of having the wrong motives. What is leprosy? It's a skin disease. It destroys a person's skin. It produces an awful smell. It's a smell of death. Aaron quickly realized this condition would lead to a life of pain. He also knew, as high priest, that what this skin disease meant for his sister, a life separated from the people of God. She couldn't come around her neighbors and her friends. She couldn't come around her family. She was an outcast. Like fashion to the physical disease, spiritual envy produces a similar result. Envy always produces a foul aroma. Moses cried out to the Lord on behalf of Miriam and Aaron. Moses pleaded with the Lord to heal Miriam. In response to Moses' petition, the Lord answered by first justifying his delay in hearing Miriam, Numbers 12, 14. Why did he talk about her father spitting in her face? Well, spitting in someone's face was a sign of disapproval, we learned from reading Deuteronomy, chapter 25, and verse 9. This serious act of resurrection would call for Miriam being confined outside the camp. She would have to fend for herself. She would have to protect herself against the animals of the wild and the creeping things, the spiders and the scorpions. She would have to find a way to get her own food and water, because she was an outcast. It's natural to ask why God didn't restore Miriam immediately. You see, God's healing process might seem harsh, but we can find hope in Miriam's restoration. There are some things we can learn from God's delaying Miriam's restoration to her family and to her friends, allowing her to mingle again with the people of the nation of Israel. When God set her aside for seven days, it gave her seven days to reflect. While seven days might seem like a long punishment, some lepers are left outcast for the rest of their lives. Miriam was given the necessary space to think about what she'd done. And then Miriam was brought back in. After her time outside the camp, Miriam was brought back in. Though her heart had spoken against God, her restoration allowed her to be welcomed back into the family. We have sinned against Almighty God, and the punishment we deserve is death, from which there is no coming back. And when we die as a sinner, our souls and our spirits wind up in an awful, awful place called hell. And in hell, we suffer the pain of being a sinner forever. But God stepped in, like He stepped in for Miriam and restored her. Jesus stepped in, innocent, never having sinned, never deserving death. And He decided to go to the cross, and on the cross, die and shed His blood and pay for our sins, so that we might not have to. And just like Christ brings us back in through His sacrifice, Miriam was brought back in. After her time outside the camp, she was brought back in, even though her heart had spoken against God, her restoration allowed her to be welcomed back into the family. The people didn't move on. What a powerful image. They had someplace to go. This was a people with a mission to get to the promised land, yet they didn't move on until Miriam was brought back into their community. That's what the church is supposed to be like. When one of us stumbles and falls, instead of browbeating them and being critical and putting them down, we should reach out in love and help them to be restored and brought back into fellowship. In a harsh world, it's really a harsh world in which we live, and when we do something the world doesn't like, the world will cancel us. But in Miriam, we have a picture of a community of grace that was waiting for her to come back home before they would move forward. All that we would, as a church, recognize those that have fallen and be willing to make opportunity to lift them up and help them to come home. But we must, we must find ways to guard our hearts against a critical spirit. We've seen the dangers of a critical spirit and how we need to guard our hearts against criticizing others. So there's some things we can do. First, first, we need to be honest with ourselves. We need to evaluate our heart for complaints against others. We need to ask God to reveal where we might be comparing ourselves to others. The first step in being able to do that is to look at yourself as God looks at you. And how do you do that? You read the Bible. And then, when your heart is prone to criticize, stop. Don't do that. Instead, find somebody to encourage, and with great intention, let that person know how he or she blesses you. Confess your criticism to another. Have you been critical of someone in unhealthy ways? The Lord may be convicting you. The Lord may be convicting you to ask that person for forgiveness and seek to walk in steps of reconciliation. Sometimes God hears our complaints when we pray, and sometimes He's listening when someone else prays for us, like Moses did for Miriam. In all cases, no matter what the circumstances, He knows the motivations of our hearts. So I encourage you to be sensitive to the convicting work of the Holy Spirit regarding how a critical spirit can affect you personally and impact others, including the people that we should love the most, the people of our own church. Father, help us to guard our hearts against a critic, against a critical spirit that can negatively impact us and our church. Teach us to be strong and mild-mannered in our walk, so that when differences arise, we can treat each other with respect. We pray this in the name of Jesus, our Savior and Lord. Amen. Well, that's it for another week. And as the material for the next series hasn't arrived to me yet, I'm a little bit at a loss as to tell you what we'll start on next weekend. But it'll, I'll try and get something out on the Facebook group and on the church website and some other places. Maybe you can get a little idea of where we're going to be going. But in any case, there will be a new series, and we will have a Bible study, and we'll continue doing that as long as the Lord allows. So join me next week as we venture into that new series, As Yet Unknown to Us.